I saw.
Denise, did you give my, give me my pen back? Did you give me my pen back from Ms. Newt?
Seeing at six oh one, I'd like to call August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting of the Kenai City Council order. I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening, and if you are able, would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Clerk, please call her all.
Mayor Gabriel.
Here.
Councilmember Winger.
She sat here.
Yeah.
Uh, councilmember Glenn Dunning.
Here.
Vice Mayor Malloy.
Here.
Councilmember Petty.
Here.
Councilmember Askin.
Here.
Councilmember Axton.
Here.
Mayor Gabriel, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we get to agenda approval, Council, I'd like to draw your attention to a laydown you should have before you with requested additions to the packet. Action, add to item D eight, resolution number two thousand twenty-one dash fifty-four, KBP memo and KB, KPB PowerPoint presentation requested by the city manager. And action add to item J one, city manager report, Kenai marketing plan FY two thousand twenty-two detail requested by the city manager. Pleasure, Council, Vice Mayor Malloy.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Moved to approve the agenda with the requested additions to the packet listed by the mayor and request unanimous consent.
Second.
Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Councilmember Axton.
Thank you. I move for approval of the consent agenda and request unanimous consent.
Second.
Is there anybody on the council that would like to amend the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none, I'd like to ask the clerk to please read the consent agenda into the record.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Tonight on your consent agenda, you have approval of the work session summary of August fourth, two thousand twenty-one, approval of the regular meeting minutes of August fourth, two thousand twenty-one, approval of bills to be ratified, introduction of ordinance number three, two, three, four, dash, two thousand twenty-one, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the airport improvements capital project fund, amending the city's professional services agreement with HDL engineering consultants, accepting grant funding from the Federal Aviation Administration, and issuing a purchase order for construction of the two thousand twenty-one airfield drainage rehabilitation project at the Kenai Peninsula Airport brought forth by administration, the public hearing on September first, introduction of ordinance three, two, three, five, dash, two thousand twenty-one, accepting and appropriating a grant from the state of Alaska for the purchase of library books brought forth by administration with a public hearing on September first, introduction of ordinance number three, two, three, six, dash, two thousand twenty-one, amending the official zoning map by rezoning T five north, R eleven west, section six, Seward Meridian, KN, north one hundred fifty feet of government lot thirty-four, from suburban residential to general commercial brought forth by administration with a public hearing on September first, and introduction of ordinance number three, two, three, seven, dash, two thousand twenty-one, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the general fund, land administration department, to provide funding for a Kenai waterfront revitalization feasibility study brought forth by administration with a public hearing on September first, and that is your consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to any item that is on the consent agenda, which was just right into the record?
If you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature or unmute yourself.
Seeing none, we'll bring back the council. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Next up, we have scheduled public comment. Tim Dillon, Executive Director, Kenai Peninsula Economic Development, Development District, with a quarterly update. Mr. Dillon.
Thank you all very much for allowing me to come and present tonight. Are you all set over there, Jamie? Okay. So, um, I will try and go quickly. I've got a, a really cool project that we just finished that I want to share with you guys tonight. In fact, it's actually been debuted here tonight and not in a different city. So, um, remember, you know, how big the Kenai Peninsula is. One of our big things that we have worked on, especially the last couple of years, is continuing our outreach and engagement, not only with our incorporated communities, but also our unincorporated communities, the chambers, and also a variety of different agencies. We worked on our, our SEDS plan, which, um, we spent a little bit over a year. It was approved by the, uh, state, uh, EDA, uh, here around a month ago, uh, the overarching goal being quality of life, and then those are the five, uh, areas that we're going to concentrate on. The reason that's so important is because any of the financial requests that you all put into the federal government, um, whether it's USDA, ARPA, any of those things, they're going to come back and look and see how it ties back to the SEDS. So, if you look at this and you say, some of these words are, are rather large or, or, you know, all encompassing, it's written for a reason. Um, and we've never, in my five and a half years, six years, we've never been in a position where we couldn't put somebody's project somewhere in our, uh, SEDS. We'll continue to work on cultivating and maintaining our current relationships. You know, here in Kenai, we've got a variety of different things that we're working on. Um, I'm really pleased to see, you know, you all moving forward with the potential of the feasibility study. That will help me an awful lot, be able to help you when it comes to identifying funding. Um, we're also still working with the administration on the erosion project, um, the bluff erosion and working right now on trying to find additional match money. Um, we, uh, we make sure that, uh, there's lots of different things that, uh, we've been working on, our, uh, between our, our resiliency plan and our YouTube channel, um, lots of different resources so that the Kenai Peninsula can be looked at by folks around the state, and this is the, the place they want to be and, and, uh, the, the group they want to try and, and mimic. Um, our loan program, um, is pretty much, much up and ready to start running. This is our second loan program. Um, this one's going to have higher limits. The other one is, uh, twenty-five thousand. This one's, uh, going to be right in around sixty-five to seventy thousand. Um, but, uh, you'll hear a little bit more about the rollout for this one here in the next thirty or forty-five days. A lot of different projects, uh, broadband expansion, uh, program. We've been working with the governor's office and working with, uh, a variety of the, the, uh, contractors and delivery folks, um, to make sure that the Kenai Peninsula is taken care of when it comes to broadband. Um, as you can see with that list, it lists, you know, everything from the new loan program to erosion, uh, projects. Alucdoc Pride is the mariculture facility that we're assisting with over, over in Seward. Um, and I've been playing a, a bigger role in coordinating all the ardors. You know, there's the nine different ardors around the state, and because of some of our successes down here, um, we've been asked to try and help. We, we actually assisted over in Kodiak to put together an economic development organization there, um, the Denali Borough, um, they're now up and running, and most recently, we've been working, um, the governor asked us to handle stuff, uh, in the valley because they did not have an economic development organization, so we're working on all those. Um, these are two cool new programs that we've been able to partner with Swampy. So, if you've never got an energy audit for your home or business, and especially your business, um, there's a way for you to be able to get, uh, a good portion of it paid for, um, and then also be able to use the results, uh, when it comes for future funding. The cool part is this part here, especially with all the fishing vessels. This is the first time to be able to upgrade people's commercial fishing vessels. So, if you know folks that are in the fishing industry, please make sure they look at this. So, whether it be refrigeration upgrades, LED lighting, um, all that kind of stuff, the zoning with, with hold tanks and all, um, we'll be able to, uh, give them all a hand. And as I said, this is a project we're working on with Swampy, which is one of the, uh, not only one of the nine ardors, but also one of the four federally recognized ardors. Over the last several years, we've learned an awful lot between the fishing disasters, the earthquake, the COVID, and the fires. We're currently working on an economic resiliency plan. Our goal is for the, uh, next July, we're going to have a toolbox that's going to be specific for Kenai Peninsula Borough businesses. Everything from how to start a business to a lot of the things that we learned over the, the last, uh, couple of years about business licenses, about some of the things, uh, you know, we've got a lot of folks that deal with, with, um, deposits, that weren't handling deposits correctly, when somebody books a fishing trip or a hotel, or a B and B, those kinds of things. So, this is, uh, one of the latest projects that we're working on right now, and, and that'll be ready to, uh, release in, uh, July. This next piece is a, uh, a little bit over a six-minute, um, video, and this is our latest project, and this is a gift to, uh, the Kenai Peninsula, and, uh, I hope you enjoy it. Um, but, uh, this was all paid for by the federal government. It was a, a thank you to us for all the work that we have done.
Are you interested in starting or expanding a business? Would you like to locate your business in a place with a stable, skilled workforce, great quality of life, low cost of living, and a business support structure to work for you? The Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District has partnered with the Alaska Manufacturing Extension Partnership, housed within the University of Alaska Business Enterprise Institute to foster the development and growth of business and manufacturing on the Kenai Peninsula. We are a certified economic development organization. We work with startups and existing businesses to create plans for growth, secure financing, and help with logistics and location. The Alaska Manufacturing Extension Partnership, or the Alaska MEP, is the go-to center for advancing Alaska's manufacturing sector. The Alaska MEP provides services directly to manufacturers to increase sales, reach new markets, reduce manufacturing and supply chain costs, and recruit and retain a high-quality workforce. Our business incubation center offers land, warehouse, office, classroom, and conference room space to businesses at all stages of development. This is your opportunity to work with an Alaskan federally recognized economic development organization. We assisted in the distribution of one hundred and ninety-eight million dollars to the Kenai Peninsula-based businesses in two thousand twenty to support and build those businesses during the pandemic. Our transportation infrastructure includes an excellent road system, freight and container rail services connecting Seward to Anchorage ports, and international rail services with Canada, the Alaska Marine Highway System servicing Woodyear and Homer, twenty-three FAA airports with water and land runways, and two commercial airports with regular service from Anchorage. The Kenai Peninsula, also known as Alaska's playground, enjoys a robust, highly-rated K-12 educational system, and is home to Kenai Peninsula College, with three campuses and almost two thousand students engaged in technology and vocational learning programs. AVTEC in Seward provides maritime science training, industrial electronic, electricity, and welding certifications, as well as information and office technology programs. We are one of the most economically and geographically diverse regions in Alaska. Residents enjoy high quality of life with abundant recreational resources, state-of-the-art medical facilities, affordable housing, short commute times, and strong community ties. The Cook Inlet Basin provides nearly all the natural gas used in Alaska for heating and power production. Our tourism industry is globally recognized, with two hundred and eighty-two million dollars in gross tourism-based business sales in two thousand seventeen alone. Three Kenai Peninsula ice-free ports rank among the top ports in the U.S. by value of seafood landings.
If you do a good job providing quality service, you'll be successful.
So, we start with the Kenai area, and we work to include as many local vendors as possible, and then we branch out to other Alaska-made products, and then if, you know, we fill in with outside of Alaska.
Really plan out that business. Understand, uh, the regulatory issues, uh, both from federal, state, and local level.
Really build those relationships within your community, not only with your economic development district, um, but also the small business administration.
The advice I would give any, uh, any startup or, or new business endeavor on the Kenai Peninsula is diversify. The key component to what we do, even within our market, we, uh, it's Alaska. There's a limited demographic, and we have to be really good at a lot of things.
To just follow their dreams, and to reach out to other small businesses like myself, especially when you have questions, because they're going to be your best resource.
And then, really, it, it's, it's hiring great people to, to work for you.
Be prepared to be really busy, to work really hard, to be exhausted and frustrated a lot of the time, but also be prepared to do one of the most fulfilling things that you've ever had the opportunity to do.
Very first round of capital came from KPED when we were just a little baby business. We put that business plan together and.
We literally cried. I cried when we got the call that that loan was approved.
This is your opportunity to live and work in the next frontier. A business-friendly microcosm of Alaska's best features: economic diversity, limitless opportunity, glacial rivers, vast mountain ranges, boundless spruce forests, coastal fjords, and a temperate climate. Are you ready to grab your piece of the next frontier? Contact us online at kped.org or call nine zero seven two eight three 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 five. Are you interested in starting or?
In a hotel up in Anchorage, um, and turning on the Alaska Channel, that's what you're going to see. Um, we were also able to purchase, uh, with the money that, uh, we received from, from, uh, the feds, um, a full year on the Alaska Channel, and we've also done some vignettes from this, um, so you'll see some smaller versions in certain places and things, but, um, we have plans to be able to roll it out, not only all over the state, but in a variety of other markets, so, um. I'm not, uh, connected. There it is. So, um, hopefully some of you have heard here recently about the partnership we put together with, uh, the Job Center and with your chamber. Tuesday, September twenty-first, we're going to do a career and education fair. You know, one of the things everybody's talking about is workforce, workforce, and workforce. So, we're going to, uh, try and aid with not only helping individuals that are looking to hire people, but also people that are out there looking for a job. Um, we'll also have our, our website, um, where we're going to do a couple of tutorials and things to try and help, uh, people learn how to, how to use that. Um, the Industry Outlook Forum, uh, January sixth, and, uh, it originally was supposed to be here, uh, last year, but then we did it online. So, as I promised your city manager, we would make sure that when we went live, we would start back in Kenai. So, it's January sixth, and we're already lining up a variety of different speakers. Thank you all very much. I appreciate the opportunity. I'd be more than happy to answer some questions. I apologize if I went over by a minute or two, but I hope you all liked that video. Um, it's, uh, again, a, part of our role is to try and, uh, not only develop what we have already, but make sure that we encourage people to, uh, start businesses, grow businesses, um, and, and bring other businesses in. So, I hope that goes a little bit.
Yeah, it made me want to move here, and then I realized I already live here, so.
I, I can tell you, I shared it with the Commissioner of Commerce here on Monday, and she called me Monday night, and she says, I want to move my office to the Kenai Peninsula. And I said, Julie, not a problem. We can make that happen.
Any questions for Mr. Dillon? Uh, councilmember Glenn Dunning.
Yeah, just, uh, my, my favorite question.
Yes, and, oh, yes! My crystal ball.
Karnak. Yeah, um, I saw the, uh, the headline where we, we gained significant population here on, on the Kenai, and, uh, that can't help but leverage what you're offering here for the, uh, for the business opportunities. And, uh, do you have just a rough order magnitude of, of the population gained?
Yeah, um, first of all, we're one of the few around the state that, uh, saw an increase, and pretty much we saw an increase across the board, um, with, uh, incorporated and unincorporated communities. Um, right in around three thousand, uh, additional folks, um, which is very positive. Kenai, um, you're up three hundred and twelve. I'm sure that you want to know whether, uh, Paul's going to want to know, did, did I beat my neighbor? And yes, you did beat your neighbor, but they had a hundred and seventy-nine up. So, um, in fact, Kenai, uh, now leads the way when, when it comes to, uh, population on the Kenai Peninsula, um, followed by the Kenai River area, Saldana, Casiloff, and the Kiski. Um, so, uh, we'll see what, what happens with the latest round of lawsuits and everything else about redistricting and all that, because I'm sure some of that stuff is on its way.
Well, it's almost ready. You're prepared for that question. Uh, any other questions of, uh, Mr.?
Dillon, I graciously appreciate that. If you would explain two things for me and the audience, uh, would you share with me what SEDS means, and also if I'm saying that correctly? And then you also mentioned nine ARDS, and maybe I'm not pronouncing that correct either, but if you could just, uh, share with me what those are, I would graciously appreciate it.
First of all, the SEDS is a comprehensive economic development strategy.
Okay.
So, it's a document, um, that, it's a living document that we do once every five years, and then we update it every year. And it's, realistically, we're looking at the, the bigger picture of things, of, of who we are and what we want, you know, our, our dreams, our aspirations. And we did a, a lot of outreach. Um, we had over twenty-five hundred people participate, um, during that, that year long with, with helping us, and now with those, um, we, we have, between having the overarching goal of quality of living, um, and then you have the, the five different areas underneath it, and, and if you think about it, these are, these are the things that we keep hearing about. Technology and communication, you know, that's the, the first one. Workforce and human capital, infrastructure and land use, business climate and entrepreneurship, and regional partnerships. Um, so, that's what, what it does. And then every year, uh, in around, we're doing it all the time, but really Caitlin and, and Cassidy and I sit down in around April, and we review everything that's happened this past year and try and tie it back to these. This is also something that I work with my board on, um, because sometimes we're asked to do a variety of different things. And what happens is, when somebody calls me, I sit down and I look, and can I fit it under one of those five? If I can, then we're going to go ahead and just, you know, make an appointment and, and get some help. If not, my job is to find somebody, open up the door of who can help them with that. The other, uh, question we had was about the ardors, and what those are, those are regional organizations that are, um, were actually authorized by the state of Alaska. There's nine of them, um, to handle economic development. Um, on top of that, there's four of us that are recognized as, uh, economic development districts by the federal government. Um, so, it's, it's just a, a separate certification based on what we do and, and how we do it. Um, some people have asked, okay, so if you've got the state recognition, how much out of the budget do you guys get from the state? And we don't get a dime from the, the state. Um, and again, our, our budget this year is probably around one point one, one point two million. Um, and, uh, every one of them is tied back to a contract, and I'm always asked, well, how much do each of the cities, uh, chip in for, for this? Um, and, uh, we don't ask the cities to chip in at all. We just want your, you to be able to give us the input and, uh, help us, you know, when, when we're moving along with things and make sure that we know what you need, uh, so that we can help you. You're welcome.
Yeah. Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Uh, once again, thanks so much for an excellent presentation, Mr. Dillon. Really appreciate it. Um, enjoyed the video too. That was really cool. Um, and I, I could see with the SEDS, a lot of, uh, you know, interfacing with what we have right on our agenda tonight, you know, even like, for example, the, um, if we adopt the joint resolution about the, um, boroughs, uh, you know, grant application for Spruce Park beetle mitigation, you know, and then we have the other one, uh, that you mentioned, uh, that we're considering, uh, you know, uh, a layer that has to do with the feasibility study that's, uh, going to, going to come up at, at another meeting later. Uh, and so I, I could see some value with the, uh, consultants if the council passes that, interfacing with your organization regarding some granting issues and things like that as far as feasibility. your organization regarding some granting issues and things like that as far as feasibility goes for waterfront development. And do you have any thoughts on that?
I can tell you, I've already had several discussions about waterfront development, not only with the administration, but also with several council members that have reached out to me and other community members. And I honestly believe that it's a diamond in the rough, and the first piece that you really need is that feasibility study. So I'm excited about you all looking into that. One of the things that that's going to help us with is that with some of the RFP money, and as you probably know, there's six different NOFOs, which has, they're basically buckets of money to do different things. We then can take that study that you're doing, once we see what the RFP looks like and things, and then try and tie it into exactly where we think the next steps are. Perfect example is, there's another community here on the peninsula. We've got probably between seven and nine active projects that we're helping people with. So for you to be able to do that kind of feasibility study, what we can do is then take that and help package something with the administration that would be almost like a design bid build project. And we're sitting at a time right now that we're probably never, ever going to see again with the kind of money that's out there if we've got good projects and how to put things together. For example, over by your waterfront, you have some infrastructure needs, you know, whether it be water, sewer, electric, you know, all those kinds of things. There's a bucket that we can look at and see, is there a way to do that? And what really helps is whenever you go to the federal government for any of this kind of stuff, for you to be able to show that the city or whoever the organization is has some skin in the game. They're already thinking this way, they're working on it, and they're trying to put something together. So, you know, that's a huge thing. And again, you know, I visit with your city manager periodically and we talk about these kinds of things and what you need. So we're here and that's what we're here for.
Thank you.
Other questions of Mr. Dillon? Yeah, thanks, Tom. Appreciate your presentation and your quarterly report. Always look forward to that.
You're welcome. And that video, I actually haven't shown it to my board yet. I show them that tomorrow. I have a board meeting tomorrow, so I share it with them tomorrow. And then it'll be on a variety of different places where you'll be able to share it with other people.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I should ask online, is there either there are Zoom members that wanted to ask a question? Okay, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to unscheduled public comment. Is there anybody that would like to address the council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Please come forward and give your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Ryan Hat. I just live off my fishing boat in Homer right now, and I just want to say it's just a travesty what's going on in this river right now. And I talked to Scott earlier, and he was saying, you know, there's nothing we can do. And there is, you guys can stop, I mean, they started doing these paired restrictions and stuff against us, commercial fishermen, you guys can stop this dip netting, and that'll prove point to them right then and there that, you know, you guys mean business. I mean, right now, you know, he's saying $300,000, $400,000. I mean, you're having $600,000 a day going up that river and nobody's allowed to fish them, and it's super sad. I mean, there's many families that are just broke right now because they only got to fish three days this summer, and it's the highest escapement ever on that Kenai River. It's just super sad. There's only 200 boats out there now. There is 584, I believe, or supposed to be. It's just, I don't know, there's got to be a stop to it somewhere. And I think you guys putting your foot down to that dip netting thing, maybe closing that city of Kenai Dock, you know, maybe it'll help, maybe it won't, but just sitting here doing nothing definitely is not helping. It's super sad. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Are you a drifter or a set net site?
I have some set net sites, but I don't fish them anymore. I drift now.
Drift, 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 okay. Mr. Hat, was it?
Yes, sir.
Is anybody, any questions for Mr. Hat?
I can probably just say that there's other people that have the same sentiments that you just expressed, that there's a lost economic opportunity that could have been capitalized on better. So I know there's groups that will be working towards that in the next port of fish cycle, so.
I hope so.
And so Upper Cookin', I think, is scheduled for 2024, so.
And the economic loss, it's looking like this year is going to be between $15 and $20 million.
I think it's way more than that.
Okay, well, yeah. So, and just hope something gets done about it. I don't know, I told it to the Saldana one, too, and I tried to voice my opinion there. Just, there needs to be an end to this. It's getting disgusting out there.
Thank you very much, Gabriel.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to address the council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearings. First up, we have item D1, ordinance number 3226-2021, increasing fiscal year 2021 estimated revenues and appropriations in the general fund police department and accepting a grant from the Alaska High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area for drug investigation, overtime expenditures. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Move to enact ordinance number 3226-2021.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number 3226-2021? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yeah.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And Councilmember Winger, I can see you on Zoom, so I'll just look at you if you want to ask a question or just raise your hand, and I'll call you just as you were on the dais. And I think Councilmember Askin will have to use the raise hand feature because I can't see her, so, thank you. Next up, we have item D2, ordinance number 3227-2021, accepting and appropriating a grant from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security passed through the state of Alaska Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the general fund fire department and authorizing a sole source purchase of portable radios, accessories, and accessories for the fire department. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to enact ordinance 3227-2021.
Second. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number 3227-2021?
And if you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature or unmute yourself.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yeah, just a question about the utility of the radio. Within the city, all the public safety concerns are on the same frequency, or are there other channels they can go to? In other words, would the fire and police be able to communicate directly in real time? And then the other part of the question is, there's state police, CES, these radios would be able to communicate with them also? And they would be able to share our channels in real time?
Mr. Ross Turner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Glenn Dunning, I'm going to pass that over to Chief Ross in the back there. He'll be able to give a much better explanation than I can.
I can as well, if you need me to, Paul.
Councilwoman Glenn Dunning, through the mayor, that is correct. They do handle all those channels. The fire department radios will handle CES and the Kisqy and actually be able to switch to emergency channels that are used statewide as well. And the police ones can handle the Saldana police, the troopers, and other various police agencies.
And then, you know, things have changed in the past 50 years. There's enough repeaters, we can get far out on the North Road, and our communication is a lot better than perhaps I first noticed when I got here. And thank you for keeping us updated on these radios. They are so important for our public safety. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And I assume that these are the standard ALMR radios?
Mayor, yes, they are.
Any other comments, deliberation? Councilmember Naxted?
Yeah, I just want to say I do support accepting and appropriating these funds, and also I believe that it's in the city's best interest to approve the sole source purchase for the 13 portable radios.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mayor Gabriel, this is Chief Prior.
Yes. Go ahead, chief.
These radios, these radios will also be TDMA-enabled, so, which will be able to use the current repeaters that split. So we'll be able to use two radios per repeater on our sites that are on the Beacon Tower.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions, deliberation? And I guess, I think I already know the answer to this, but I know there's another item further down our agenda requesting possibly a coordination with the city of Saldana for dispatch services, and these radios would mesh with that if that was something that was to happen in the future, I presume, probably for Chief Ross.
Mayor, yes, these radios will work for whatever we do for the foreseeable future.
Very good. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Council on item D3, ordinance number 3228-2021, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the airport fund, terminal repair, and maintenance department for expenditures in excess of budget amounts related to damage to terminal buildings, citing and authorizing a purchase order to Blazey Construction Incorporated. Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Move to enact ordinance number 3228-2021.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number 3228-2021? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Naxted?
Yeah, not on the ordinance at all. I totally support that. I just wanted to ask the city manager, you know, how the loader hit the building and how we might be able to avoid that in the future.
Mr. Ross Turner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Naxted, so they were clearing snow directly adjacent to where the restaurant is, and the loader just got too close and hit the terminal building. We put in operational guidance now that no motorized vehicle, no snow clearing equipment that's motorized can get within five feet of the building. Everything else needs to be done by hand, so I anticipate that that is going to limit any damage or eliminate any damage going forward. Based on the expense of this cost or this fix, we clearly need to make sure that operations doesn't do it again.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilmember Petty?
Would our insurance that we have on that facility cover this?
Mr. Ross Turner?
Through the mayor, Councilmember Petty, it is applicable, but our deductible is $25,000, so it's just under the deductible amount.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Thank you, council. On item D4, ordinance number 3229-2021, accepting a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the airport snow removal equipment capital project fund. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, mayor. I move to enact ordinance 3229-2021.
Second, that.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number 3229-2021? Seeing none, we'll bring it, is there anybody online?
No.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Seeing none. Hopefully, this will, this looks like a, I'll probably just sum up whatever I think. I think this is a piece of equipment I know for especially the type of winter we had last year, to be able to keep up with our standards and minimums that we have at the airport, that this will be obviously a good piece of equipment to do that. Councilmember Naxted?
Yeah, and I agree with that, and I guess all I would have to add is, well, of course, it broke during the last couple of snows, but the process is long to get it here, and it's very timely, because unfortunately, it'll be snowing before long.
Yes. Don't say that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yeah.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Council on item D5, ordinance number 3230-2021, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the general fund fire department for the purchase of extrication equipment needed to provide emergency responses to motor vehicle accidents. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you, mayor. I move to enact ordinance 3230-2021.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number 3230-2021?
And again, on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature or unmute yourself.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. And do you have any discussion, Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yeah, did I gather correctly from Chief Prior's memo that this is an apparatus that is common to all or most of the fire departments in our area?
I'll go through, Mr. Ross Turner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Glenn Dunning, so any questions on this, since Tony did call in here, I'll let him handle all the questions on this ordinance. So Tony, can you answer that for us?
Councilmember Glenn Dunning, yes, that is correct. All the other fire departments do have the same equipment.
Thank you.
Any further questions, discussion? Councilmember Petty?
I'm thankful that we'll be updating this type of equipment for our community, hoping that this piece of equipment never has to be used.
Thank you. Councilmember Naxted?
Thank you. Unfortunately, I'm sure it will be used, but yeah, totally in support of this, and it's necessary and needed. I wanted to ask about the equipment and the sole source. It's in the section two, the city manager is authorized to issue a sole source purchase, and that's perhaps in our purchasing code, if it's under $35,000, I'm not sure. Perhaps if you could clarify that, and also, and perhaps it's in here also, but why is this piece of equipment the one we want a sole source to?
Tony on that?
Questions, I guess.
Mr. Ross Turner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Naxted, and Chief Prior, if you'd like to chime in when I'm done, you certainly can, particularly about the type of equipment. So this sole source purchase is issued here. Ellen Curtis and Sons is the only provider of this product in the state of Alaska, so that justifies the sole source itself. As far as why this piece of equipment, interoperability with our neighboring departments is something that is important, I know that was one of the deciding factors in going with this equipment. Chief Prior may have additional to add beyond that.
Chief Prior?
Thank you, Paul. Councilmember Naxted, that Ellen Curtis supplies the Hearst units, and those are the ones that we've had longstanding with the department. We've had great success with them, and also both of our neighboring departments use that same brand. So if we had a multiple casualty or if we had a major incident, they would be able to grab our equipment and fill in and actually use the same piece of equipment with familiarity with it, so.
Thank you. I do have a question. So this is a battery-operated units. Can you just give us a brief rundown, like, you know, do you get extra batteries with these? How long does a battery, a charged battery, you know, last if you came across, you know, multi-vehicle accident where you had to use it, you know, for several, for extended amount of time? Just curious about the life of the battery as. Just curious about the life of the battery as you're in operation.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. The batteries do last a long time. For instance, we just had some extrication training that we went over to Beacon and used, and we cut a car up all day, and for over three hours, we were able to use a single battery on one piece of, one of the tools, and didn't run out. So the batteries have come a long ways, and we have total confidence in those. We do actually have, or will be getting, an extra batteries for those that we'll be able to use in case they do happen to run out, and they've been tested throughout the state in very cold weather. And great success with these.
Very good, thank you. Vice Mayor Malloy? I'll go Vice Mayor Malloy, and then Councilmember Winger after that.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I appreciate all my colleagues' questions, and Chief Pryor's answers, because that's pretty much dealt with most of the questions that I had, so I appreciate that. The only other question that I had, Chief Pryor, was what about delivery? How soon will be, the department be able to receive this equipment, since apparently our other units are out of service right now?
Chief Pryor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Malloy. We have a demo set from Ellen Curtis and Sons, and so we are fully capable right now. So the lead time on those may be up to three months, but we're able to use the demo set, which is the same equipment right now until ours get here.
Thank you, that's good news. Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I just threw Mayor Gabriel to Tony Pryor. I will be supporting this, and I know we've had major accidents locally in the last year, and I will be supporting this to aid in those efforts, and just want to thank all of our first responders for their diligent service.
Thank you. Any further questions of administration? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Axted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're on Item D six, Ordinance Number three two three one dash two thousand twenty-one, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the COVID-19 CARES Act Recovery Fund for a federal CARES Act grant passed through the state of Alaska Department of Public Safety for overtime and direct expenditures of police, fire, and communications departments of the city. Pleasure, council. Council, we're next then.
Thank you. I moved to enact Ordinance thirty-two thirty-one twenty twenty-one.
I'll second that.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Ordinance Number thirty-two thirty-one dash twenty twenty one? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Axted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're on Item D seven, Ordinance Number three two three two dash twenty twenty one, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the General Fund Kenai Fine Arts Center Capital Project Fund, and amending the lease for a portion of Lot Three, Block Seventeen, original town site of Kenai, for the Kenai Fine Arts Center to provide additional funding for improvements and modifications, amendment to the lease for the Kenai Fine Arts Center. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Move to enact Ordinance Number three two three two twenty twenty one.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Ordinance Number three two three two dash twenty twenty one? Ms. Nelson?
Hi, Marion Nelson, President of the Board of Directors for the Art Center at this time, and I have appreciated the city being very supportive of this, and going through this process with us over the past several years. We've had some great support, as you see, by some of the donations and of time and talents from various people in our community, and it's been very rewarding from that standpoint. A great one came in today, which I hope would arrive a little bit before that to make your packet. But, you know, outstanding support, and we're almost up and running again, but not quite, and this last push of the twenty-four thou will make that happen. The second bathroom would be finished, the various, the window in the back room, the middle of the back wall, rather, and various of the details that are outlined from Polar North Construction. And then Paul can speak to your city manager. Ross Turner can speak to the change in the lease, which is minor, and we understand it. So I'm open to questions. Oh, I want, by the way, I wanted to introduce who's with me tonight. We have our executive director, Alex Bias, or excuse me, Alex Widlinski, sorry, and treasurer Karen Fogarty, and board member Susan Barnacki. So they didn't have anything better to do tonight, so they joined me. They knew it would be fun.
Thank you. Mayor, any questions for Ms. Nelson? Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yeah, I was, I attended the meeting over the chamber today, and did I get it that your first show is opening now or will soon?
It opened, the first show after we reopened was last month with the Potter's Guild, and it was an outstanding show. They really, frankly, worked their butt off and just hit a gallery full of incredible pottery. This month, it's four different artists, three different artists, who have some great metal work, and what's his name, Jay from Seward, and Feather Floyd from here, and Kate? Dembski, yeah, from Cincinnati, who's a friend of Heather's. And not as big a show, but certainly a beautiful show. And then, you know, next month was supposed to be the Harvest Auction Show, all the donated artwork that is then auctioned at the end of the month in the Harvest Auction, our fundraiser that essentially takes care of the utilities for the year, and we can't do it. We just decided to call it off because of COVID, and we can't shrink back the numbers enough in the gallery to make it worth our while financially, so we didn't have a show, and we lost, we would lose the income from the Harvest Auction. But Alex here happens to have an incredible show in Fairbanks this month, and so we're going to get that show down here with some interesting logistics, but that will be the show for next month, and it has to do with processing reindeer, a reindeer, in Fairbanks, and the reindeer, what's the right word, herder, farmer, rancher? Farmer? Farmer. Will be here to give a talk with that, who's quite a charismatic person and well-known in the ag circles in the state, as well as reindeer folks, too. So it'll be a whole different thing, but it'll be very exciting. I might add that the reindeer that's a subject to that show has been taxidermied, if that's the right way to put that, and we could possibly get it down here, but you know what, it can't get through the door. So tough luck to us. But we will have it here in every other way, as well as a bunch of antlers and his presentation, too, which I've been told, not only by Alex, who has come to know him very well, but by other people in the ag circles in the state, who I happen to know, speak the same way about him, that where do you meet this guy? Where do you hear him? He's really, really interesting. So looking forward to all of it, Alex's incredible paintings and prints, and as well as the whole ambiance of the show. Questions?
Councilmember Petty?
Yes. Is the Art Guild currently in pursuit of any grants at this time?
We are indeed. Our two main goals right now are dealing with the lighting and the flooring in the gallery, and we are indeed starting to move in that direction. Again, Leslie Morton on our board is kind of in charge of that with help from all of us, as we can give help.
Councilmember Winger? Councilmember Winger?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Ms. Nelson, if you guys were to need to do another hundred and fifty thousand dollars in repairs, would you be able to get the money to do those repairs in a timely manner? Or would it take some time to secure the grants to take care of any necessary building maintenance?
Time, indeed, it would take time, quite a bit of time. This took a lot of time. We've been working on this for years. I can't guess how long it would take the next time around for repairs. It would depend on what it is. There's, you know, there's some interesting things in that old building. You know, pick a wall, any wall, you can come up with a project for it, for sure. Did you have something specifically in mind?
I was just wondering if you've seen the same amount of expenses for these projects, would you be able to, in a timely manner, secure the funding? Or would they take time where the city would have to intervene? I'm just concerned about the contract change.
The what change? Contract change. I don't think I understand contract change, between what and what? To get another contract, or, I'm not, I don't know. I don't know what to say to you about that. Can somebody else answer that? Help me answer that.
Mr. Ross, turn it.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I think Councilmember Winger is saying that she has some concerns about the proposed language change to the lease.
Oh, well, we get it, you know, we get it. We're responsible for the building. It's not anything different. That doesn't mean we're not going to come and beg, you know, we may well do that. But we understand that. City Manager Ross Turner has made that very clear to us, and we understand it. But that doesn't mean that we may say, hey, this is really tough. We're still going to ask you for help if we feel we need to. We certainly, we know we need to fundraise. We do that all the time anyway, and we're just going to increase it.
Thank you.
Does that answer questions from anybody else?
Did you have a question, Vice Mayor Malloy?
If I may, Mayor Gabriel? So, okay, thanks. So first off, I wanted to thank you, Ms. Nelson, and your executive director, and the board members for all the information that you've been providing to us over time regarding the capital project for renovations in the buildings. And, you know, I wanted to thank you for your last-minute laydown from Mr. Ben Hanson. That's another six thousand dollars donation, an in-kind donation for volunteer services for performing IT services, which he says are that relocation of equipment to allow the backroom space to be remodeled, specifying, purchasing, and provisioning updated network infrastructure to support the remote participation in your events. And the work is going to increase capacity for streaming services at the center and provide enterprise-grade network equipment, so.
A worthy donation.
Yeah.
Fairly worthy. You put a lot of time in that.
And I recognize that there's been a lot of other people that have contributed in kind also, and so that's great. Kind of following up on, you know, Councilmember Winger's question, and you said you understand everything in the proposed change. And one thing, too, as you mentioned, there's other issues that there may be, and lighting and stuff like that, and going for grants and everything, and you understand that what the proposal is, is that you would get a scope of work, and it would be approved by the city manager before doing any work, even if you were paying for it.
Sure. And that's what we had here. We had, you know, these, our local great architects that helped us out so much. If we hadn't had that plan, we would have been dead in the water. I mean, they were just wonderful.
Right, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to be, you know, assured that there was a meeting of the minds over it. And it's good to hear.
That would be logical.
And it's good to hear that there is, so, thanks very much.
I don't think Rasmussen would want to talk to us if we didn't have a plan.
Sure, and I get that. You know, again, thanks for all you do. I thought your first show was great. Looking forward to the other ones. And, you know, appreciate, again, the information that your organization's provided to us.
Thanks, Bob.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Nelson? Seeing none?
Do you want to say anything? One speaker, one, it's okay.
And it's, I'm sorry to hear about the Harvest Festival. That's always kind of a really cool event.
Yeah, it's always a lot of fun, but you know, if we took ten people out of the room, and then took another five or so, we quickly get down to a crowd that's too small to be productive in many ways. So it quickly started to not make sense, and so we thought, okay, I don't, this is our choice, nothing and nothing. And then it realized, my gosh, we take that away, and we're not going to have a show on the wall, because we put the auction items on the wall for the month prior to the event. And fortunately, Alex has got this incredible show. He's an incredible artist. And he's got, as I say to people, he has his right and left brain fully engaged, so he's an amazing artist, as well as being a really great techie guy. He's invaluable to us. And he's in his prime, as he tells me.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Malloy.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. There's no other discussion? I might put an amendment on the floor?
Yeah, I was just going to say if there's any other questions for Ms. Nelson. Councilman, next then.
I just want to say, if you keep talking about Alex like that, he's going to turn another shade of red.
That's okay, I'm loving it. He's a great guy.
Very good, thanks, Marion.
Yep. Anything else for me?
I think that's it.
We're good?
And with that, we've got a proposed amendment. Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I would move to amend Ordinance three two three two twenty twenty one by replacing the first blank double X in the seventh whereas with the number twenty-five thousand forty-eight dollars, ten cents, in the word in quotes in, and the second blank double X with the number three fifty.
Second, the request unanimous consent?
Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the amendment is approved. We now have Ordinance Number three two three two dash twenty twenty one as amended before us. Any further discussions? Councilman Winger?
Would this be appropriate time to offer an amendment?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to make an amendment to Ordinance three two three two dash two zero two one in the third whereas. I would like to move, remove everything after local community, so remove on-as-is-whereas basis. Requires the lease at its own cost and expenses to keep the lease premises, all improvements in good condition and repair during the term of the lease. Removed?
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Winger, do you want to explain your amendment, proposed amendment?
Yes, I have concerns when it comes to the age of this building. It's had numerous uses over a extended period of time. I'm concerned about future needs of this older building and the struggle that the organization may have securing funds in a timely manner. So if there were to be a serious repair of a hundred and fifty thousand, it would take time, which could cause more ill harm to the organization and their mission to serve our community. So I think it's only right that the city still have the ability to address our aging building. And as much as I'm in favor of this project, this is my biggest concern, and I do value them as part of our community, and I would hate to see them struggle with this change. I would also be in support of selling this local building to them for a dollar, and then they could resume all maintenance and changes at that time.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment? Vice Mayor Malloy?
I'm not sure that I understand what the amendment is. Could it be read back? Or could we be told what the whereas would say if it's passed?
I think, I think what, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Winger, is that the, in that whereas, that it would end after local community, period. Is that correct, Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
And the rest of that would be struck? Any further discussion on the? Any further discussion on the proposed amendment? I guess where I'm at with it, there would be other housekeeping if this passed because there is a, you know, section two that sort of explains, you know, the new language in there regarding expenditures of fund for improvements and maintenance of the building. Any discussion? Councilmember next.
I would agree with your statement there, Mayor. And it is consistent with the lease that the Fine Arts Guild has had with the city all along, essentially.
Further discussion on the, Councilmember Glendening?
Yeah. Yeah, this ordinance that we have does allow for city involvement in funding any unexpected major damage to the building that would require it to be brought back to operational status. We still have that ability where a future council could change this ordinance, too. Is that correct?
Yeah, a future, or a future council could, you know, they can do pretty much do or undo whatever we do. So they wouldn't be bound by this decision tonight.
Mayor Gabriel, if I may, I think what the ordinance has written, it takes away the obligation from the city to pay for these potential future expenses, but not the ability to do so.
Correct. Yes, thank you for that. I was going to make that point, too, moving forward. Councilmember Petty?
Yes, through the mayor, I'd like to ask the city manager, who's responsible for any insurance on this premise?
Mr. Osterman.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Petty, the Fine Arts Guild is responsible to maintain insurance for the building.
Is that currently up to date?
As far as I'm aware, yes, it is. We'd have, we would have to check the file, but I'm confident that if the lease file's up to date, then the insurance that they're required to maintain is up to date as well. I might actually ask Mr. Eubank, however, if the city has additional insurance on the building beyond what is required from the Fine Arts Guild.
Mr. Eubank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe we do carry, I believe it's one of our listed properties by the city, so we carry property insurance on it as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? I don't support the amendment. I think, you know, as Mr. Bloom pointed out, there that there's, you know, well, one of the things with this is it's a lease to the Art, Fine Art Center for a dollar a year. So part of that agreement is to presumably take what they would be paying in rent somewhere and applying that towards, you know, fundraising and efforts, utilities and things like that. And then also the fundraising efforts that they're doing at the moment. You know, this is, you know, we could be getting in a situation where you're financing, you know, organizations that aren't necessarily part of, you know, city operations, you know, that require services required. And they don't, not taking anything away from what they do, they provide a wonderful service and I support what they do. But in no difference than the triumvirate theater, you know, when they, when we made the land donation to them and the expectation that they are going to move forward with construction and then beyond that, you know, maintenance of the building, overhead costs and things like that, things of that nature. So any other discussion on, Councilmember Glendening?
Yeah. So this ordinance, as we pass it, will presumably bring the functionality and utility of this building up to a standard of operational, oh, I don't know, what's the best word? Operational stability for the near future. In other words, in other words, they, all the, most of the needs for bringing this building up to an operational safe standard will be met by the funding provided by this ordinance. Is that my understanding?
Mr. Osterman.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Glendening, so the additional appropriation here will complete the scope of work that's been identified by the Peninsula or the Kenai Art Guild. There are other issues with the building that have been identified as we've worked through this process that are going to have to be taken care of at some point in the future. But this appropriation does complete the scope as identified by the Art Guild.
And if something unforeseen happens, the Art Guild can approach the city for maybe interim funding to repair a serious major unforeseen standard that has to be met for the building or damage that we hadn't forecast in this until such time as a grant can be obtained by the Art Guild to take care of that unforeseen cost. I know that's speculative, but I think it's important to know that if something really goes wrong with the building, even an earthquake or some damage like that, that the city does have their back or the potential to have their back. Is that a reasonable understanding?
Mr. Osterman.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Glendening, yeah, as Mr. Bloom stated, this just states that the city is under no obligation to do so. Future council absolutely has the ability to structure any sort of financial support in whatever way that they want.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you. I don't support the amendment. I think this is, you know, this ordinance is a good balance and, you know, the city's contributed $120,000 and plus now another nearly $25,000 towards the capital renovation project in a long discussion and working with the Fine Arts Center. And there's about 14 years left on the lease. And so I think that this ordinance and the work being done with it leaves the building for the organization in a fairly good condition, you know, renovated condition once it's completed, you know, for the remainder term. And, you know, as been noted, if there's a casualty event, you know, the organization has insurance and the city has insurance, so I guess there would be a new building. You know, and would probably cost a lot more than we're putting in here now, but there'd be insurance to pay for that. And, you know, Ms. Nelson understands and the organization has kind of a meeting of the minds with the city manager over the terms here that are just really a clarification to the lease that's been in existence for a while, that the city doesn't have an obligation to do continuing repairs and we do lease it to the organization, you know, for a dollar a year. And they're a financially responsible organization. They do good financial planning, is what I've seen. Because this has all come together for a really good project. It looks, it looks good and it's functional, you know, from what I'm in there. So I'm happy with this ordinance, and for that reason, I don't support the amendment. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, clerk, please call Roll.
Councilmember Naxtett?
No.
Mayor Gabriel?
No.
Councilmember Winger?
Yeah.
Councilmember Glendening?
No.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
No.
Councilmember Petty?
No.
Councilmember Askin?
No.
The amendment fails?
Any further discussion? I guess I do have a question, maybe more for Scott, but throughout this, throughout the ordinance, there's the term the Peninsula Art Guild and the Kenai Fine Art Center using, you know, sort of used interchangeably. Is there, is there a reason for that? Mr. Osterman or Mr. Bloom? Let's start there and here we go. Mr. Bloom?
I was just going to suggest poor craftsmanship on our part, but maybe there's a specific reason.
Mr. Osterman?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I was going to save Scott because I was the one that drafted the ordinance. And I would say that the interchange was not intentional. You know, there is the Peninsula Arts Guild, and then the building is the Kenai Fine Art Center, so there is a distinction to be made there. I'm trying to find where we might have, I think that's primarily what it is when it refers to the Peninsula Art Guild as the organization. Kenai Fine Art Center is the building itself. So that may be what you're seeing.
Okay, yeah, because I see the Peninsula Art Guild, Inc., which I presume is umbrella organization, but just wanted to make sure that we didn't need to do anything there regarding language moving forward. Any other discussion on ordinance number 3232-2021 as amended? Councilmember Naxtett?
I agree with the ordinance is amended. The ordinance does two things. First off, in the lease agreement, it really doesn't change anything. It was understood and it's pretty clear. Now it's just a little clearer that the Art Guild is responsible for upkeep, maintenance of the building. And that was the case. And then a while ago, we, the council came together with $100,000 and went up to $120,000 funds for it, you know. So we were able to do that even with this in place. That was done. Matter of fact, I want to thank the administration for doing it again, really, kind of finishing up, getting the last $24,000 and change, you know, for the last of the renovations that you had identified in this. So again, we're still doing that. So it kind of gets it to a point of completion there. Granted, there are things to be done down the road, but this is clear to me that the council couldn't come back and if there was a need of some sort, and not necessarily catastrophic one, could, just like it has done tonight, it's going to, I think, going to do tonight and had done a year and a half ago, two years ago, could do it again. But the language is clear. I also wanted to point out when we, when the council approved that $120,000, it wasn't in the ordinance, as I recall, but it was in the memo and it was Vice Mayor Navarre at the time. It was a one-time, this is it. I mean, that was his intent at any rate, allocation of funds. Well, we're kind of doing it again, but that was kind of the intent at that time. So perhaps that's our intent this time until the next time.
Any further, Councilmember Glendening?
Just to clarify something, does one organization lease the building and another organization use the building? Or are the two names interchanged? Or is there going to be a commingling of names to one organization that both leases and uses the building?
Mr. Osterman.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Glendening, the lease is with Peninsula Arts Guild. They're, the building that they operate in, they call it the Kenai Fine Art Center. So that's just, and Marion, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what you call it. You call it the Kenai Fine Art Center. But the lessee is the Peninsula Arts Guild.
So the lessee and the user are the one and the same?
Yes.
And it's just word of art, what the building is called over time?
Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I will be supporting this ordinance with more clarification that council can come at a future time to allocate funds. I still stand behind my concern about leasing an aging building that we know has future repairs that are needed. And just for future reference, I would be in support of helping with funding. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Osterman.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I just, I did want to talk a little bit about, you know, in the memo, the last sentence expanding on that just a little bit, in that the modification to Section 18 that does try to clarify the fact that capital improvements and repairs to the building are the responsibility of the Peninsula Arts Guild, it is going to position them better to receive grants from someone like Rasmussen if it's a city building and the city has made it clear that their intent is to fix the building anytime it needs to be fixed. It puts him in a much more difficult position to get grants. So this amendment to this section will help them when they're pursuing grants in the future.
Thank you for that, Mr. Osterman. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call Roll on ordinance 3232-2021 as amended.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yeah.
Councilmember Glendening?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yeah.
Councilmember Naxtett?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Council on Resolution Number 2021-54, adopting Joint Resolution Number 2021-002 of the Assembly of the Kenai Peninsula Borough and councils of the cities of the Kenai Peninsula Borough, supporting our request for federal aid submitted by the Kenai Peninsula Borough to Alaska's U.S. Congressional delegation for the purpose of spruce bark beetle mitigation. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxtett?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2021-54.
Second?
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number 2021-54?
On Zoom, you can use your raise hand feature or unmute yourself.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Deliberation discussion from council. Councilmember Glendening?
So just to be clear, the, this resolution is a overarching, inclusive request for acknowledgement of impacted properties, the private, municipal, state, et cetera, within the borough. Is that a rough cut understanding?
Yeah, maybe I can answer that. When I did, we did have a laydown in front, or a PowerPoint presentation laydown that when, I just briefly went through it rather quickly before the meeting, and there was a bullet point on there that sort of outlined affected areas and also the property types. And it looked pretty inclusive of all those that you had mentioned.
Okay, I thought I saw that, and I just wanted to get it on the record that it's an overarching request. Thank you.
Councilmember Naxtett?
Yeah, I think what we're agreeing to is the joint resolution that's included here in the, it's about the fifth whereas, the whereas the borough, the cities and all residents and landowners within the Kenai Peninsula Borough share a common goal to mitigate the devastating impacts on it goes. Well, that's pretty inclusive. I think that might cover what your concerns were.
Yeah, I just, I just had a thought that, you know, if a private landowner and clam gulch would have equal claim to money as, say, City Hall with diseased trees out front of it, but maybe that's getting down a rabbit hole. This will provide money for everybody and the administration, the devil's in the detail for the administration of it. I get that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the whereas, obviously, is the request, or I mean, the joint resolution is a unified front for the request for the funding, but, and I plan on going through the PowerPoint a little more thoroughly here when I got a chance, but it looked like there was quite a bit of information regarding the actual, which wouldn't necessarily apply to the joint resolution, but to the scope of, you know, identify identification, you know, how they plan on going about outreach and other things like that. So it looked to be, at least first glance, pretty thorough.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I already took care of my danger trees on my subdivision, but that'll relieve the burden and other people can enjoy the funding. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I will be supporting this. I'm glad to see this coming forth and to be part of the request. I think really will help build steam to hopefully get this fulfilled. I've been actively talking about the spruce bark beetle on our issues since I took my seat in November. One part of the laydown on page 10 that's labeled Lessons from Spruce Bark Beetle is Answer to Public. And that's what I feel that we have not done. is Answer to Public, and that's what I feel that we have not done. The public has asked for slash piles to be opened, which we have not. I think we've seen dumping everywhere through our city, which is creating a bigger problem, more of a fire problem. So when we look at this, we have to really take these bullet points into account. Answering to public is one that we have not done yet. So we have to continue to move forth with a solution to this problem and I look forward to supporting this and getting funding so that our residents and businesses can get aid in this.
Thank you, Councilmember Winger. Yeah, and on the previous page of that PowerPoint, on page nine, under Operational Gaps, there is a bullet identification for slash disposal site distribution, which is, I think, you've had voiced concerns about. Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yes, you know, I also support the resolution and Kenai Peninsula Borough's effort. And like it says in the last whereas, the severity and magnitude of the outbreak is beyond the capacity of the borough and the cities and will require federal assistance to address this critical forest crisis on private and public property in the Kenai Peninsula Borough. And we've, you know, I've been talking about the laydown and I appreciate the information provided by the borough, especially Marcus Muller, the Land Management Officer. And page two of the laydown just lists measures that the thirty-five million dollars in federal support would address, including inventory and impact assessment of the beetle care area throughout the borough and public information and slash management, which Councilmember Winger spoke into, and assistance to private property owners, which we've been concerned about, and salvage harvest on borough lands, and technical treatments in critical public areas, and road and utility, right-of-way hazard tree removal, and innovation, infrastructure and industry investments, and wildland fire response capacity, reforestation and forest management planning. So it's pretty comprehensive and I hope this effort is successful because our public, you know, both, you know, our private and public business, as well as the city and all the cities, would benefit from this. So do support it.
Further discussion? I would just go and say that I do support this wholeheartedly and I think, you know, we almost, you know, in a way feel like we're sort of, you know, playing with, not playing words, but playing with fire in some way. By this summer, we had kind of a cool, wet summer, which, you know, tamped down the potential or fire potential throughout the peninsula. But, you know, if we have a year like we had several summers ago where we had a really super hot, dry summer, you know, things could progress pretty quickly. So I think this, you know, definitely is something we need to do and something that needs to happen fairly quickly. And I think for a lot of private property owners have done a lot of their own mitigation. I know in our neighborhood, that's been going on, but to speak to Councilmember Winger's point that, you know, certainly identifying areas of slash disposal would expedite that and get people a little more motivated. Cuz when you go over to the dump over in Soldado, they do have a slash collection site over there. But for a lot of people, that's, especially when you're dealing with branches of spruce trees, it's pick-up load after pick-up load, you know, that they would have to run, if they live in clam gulch, as Councilmember Glenn Danning might have mentioned, that that's a, you know, a long, long way to go to try to dispose of that. So certainly on the right path here and I support this wholeheartedly. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call, roll.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Danning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxte?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On item D nine, Resolution Number twenty-twenty-one dash fifty-five, approving the development incentives for, per Kenai Municipal Code twenty-one point one zero point one zero zero for a lease of airport reserved lands between the City of Kenai and Schilling Rentals LLC on general aviation apron sub number one, Amendment Block Two, Block Three. Councilmember Naxte?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash fifty-five.
I'll second that.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number two thousand twenty-one dash fifty-five? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Councilmember Naxte?
Thank you, Mayor. Anybody that drives in this area can see this building, or sorry, you can see through it now and up through it. It's down to its bones. It's got all the metal off and the roofing off and everything. So that's the one. Historically, it was the Fish and Wildlife Hangar and the feds, at least back in that time, spent very little money, more than they had to. This building was not heated. There was silt, frost susceptible material inside of it and all around it. It heaved something awful. Doors wouldn't open, things like that. And I didn't know that this lease amendment was coming, but I've been watching the operation there. They dug out material from the inside of the building, brought in non-frost susceptible material and all around in the parking area as well. And that's just what I can see from the street, frankly. So the LSE has been putting a lot of time and effort and money into it. So I will thoroughly support this amendment.
Any further, Councilmember Glenn Danning?
Yes, I too will be supporting this. I haven't been around as long as Henry have, but I've seen this building and definitely the effort that the LSE is putting into it is worthy of reward and we should approve this. Thank you.
The only thing I'd just maybe object to what you said is you said you haven't been around as long as Henry?
In this town.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I showed up when I was, I thought I was an adult, but really wasn't. It was just like Duke's Hazard and I was having the time of my life.
Thank you for the clarification.
But that's too much information.
Any further discussion?
Requesting unanimous consent.
unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution Number two thousand twenty-one dash fifty-five is adopted and let's take a ten minute at ease. We call our meeting back to order here and we are on item G six, action approval authorizing a special use permit to Boys and Girls Club of the Kenai Peninsula for office space at the Beacon Building. Do you want to lead off on this, Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Move to authorize a special use permit to Boys and Girls Club of the Kenai Peninsula for office space at the Beacon Building.
Second that.
Any discussion on the action approval item to authorize a special use permit to Boys and Girls Club at the Beacon Center? Councilmember Glenn Danning?
Yeah, does, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Does this consideration take all of the classroom space on the second floor?
Mr. Osterner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Glenn Danning. No, it does not. That most of the office space is taken by this, but there's office spates that's used by Red Cross in the upper floor. There's also an office space that is a part of the lease with Beacon. And actually, it's not office space specifically, but the operations room itself is on the second floor as well.
Should a class need to be given for any fire training people, is there room for them to? Is there room for them to have a class in that building?
Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, Councilmember Glenn Dunning. Yeah, there's, there is sufficient classroom space on the bottom floor, and then that one classroom space on the upper floor as well, which is, has always been well more than sufficient to cover any fire training.
Thank you.
And I will add that there is a note that the permit does not guarantee the exclusive use of the area.
I just wanted to make sure that we wouldn't have to negotiate use of the area. In other words, there would be ample room for both without, without the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Request unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Do we have any objection from our online folks? I see Councilmember Winger is...
No objection.
Okay.
I have no objection.
Okay, very good. Seeing no objection, the, the approval to authorize a special, or it's approved to authorize a special use permit to the Boys and Girls Club of Kenai Peninsula for office space at the Beacon Building. Next up, item G seven, action approval, letter support for Canitee Indian Tribe grant request for pilot fixed route transportation program. Councilmember Nextet?
Thank you. I move to support us writing a letter to support the Canitee Indian Tribe and their endeavors.
And I will note there is a, a, a letter in, included under this item in the packet. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Could we get a, a report from the city manager?
Yes, Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, Vice Mayor Malloy. So, the Canitee tribe reached out and requested that Mayor Gabriel sign a letter in support of a grant application that they're submitting to the U.S. Department of Transportation. And what they are proposing to do is a fixed route bus service that would go along three major central Kenai Peninsula corridors. There would be one that would go from Kenai Spur Highway going from McKiski through Kenai to Soldatna. Also be the Sterling Highway from the Sterling in the north through Soldatna to K Beach, and then the K Beach, and then a K Beach road from Sterling Highway Junction to the east, City of Kenai in the west. So, the two routes are planned for the two-year pilot program. They have identified that there's a need in the community for a fixed route system. You know, we've got karts, and we've got Alaska Cab and other cab companies that can provide even subsidize transportation for some of these folks that need it, but there is no fixed route system, and they think that this pilot program, which you've run for two years, can either, they're hoping will prove that it is a viable system to, to move forward from there. And they, again, reached out to the city asking for Mayor Gabriel to sign a letter in support of that grant application.
Councilmember Petty?
Through the mayor. City Manager Ostrander, are you aware if this would be for the whole populace of the community? Or is it specific to just our native friends?
Mr. Ostrander.
Through Mayor Gabriel, thank you for that question, Councilmember Petty. It is open to the public, so not only tribe members, but anyone from the public is able to utilize this, this program. We made sure we asked that question, and they said it would be open to any member of the public.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. On the line that runs down K Beach, would it go as far as, say, VIP subdivision? Would it extend that far south? Or would it just turn at the bridge and come into town? Or, or don't we know?
Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, Councilmember Glenn Dunning. I'm, I'm not certain. I think it does just turn right, but I, I don't know with certainty.
Okay, and that could be, that could be adjusted with suggestions too, but I, I will be supporting this, thank you.
Councilmember Petty?
Was it disclosed the amount of the grant?
Mr. Ostrander.
Through the mayor, Councilmember Petty, no, it was not.
And I, I'm presuming that the level of service is probably tied to the, to maybe the potent, the, the grant funding if it is approved? Is that, would that be a good assumption, Mr. Ostrander?
Yes, I believe so.
Any questions of our online members? Seeing none, any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Nextet?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Thank you. Next up, we have item G eight, action approval, potential partnership with the City of Soldatna to provide 911 dispatch services. Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I'd move that the council direct the administration to perform the due diligence necessary to determine if a partnership with the City of Soldatna to provide 911 dispatch services is in the benefits interest of the City of Kenai and bring a recommendation back to council.
Second.
Discussion? Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Can administration speak about this a little more, on what that contract would look like? How grant services would work? And the pain of, you know, radios and updated equipment that dispatch would work? How would that work in a partnership?
Mr. Ostrander?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, Councilmember Winger. So, we would be providing this with a term contract with the City of Soldatna. So, we would provide, obviously, the location for dispatch services, and we would provide the equipment for dispatch services. They would be under contract. So, the way I envision this happening is that the contract would be based on the population of the two cities, and they would pay the percentage of police dispatch services based on that population. As far as grants, you know, we would continue to operate the same way we have and pursue grants in the same manner we have previously. If there were significant upgrades to the system that needed to be made, depending on what we find when we go through our due diligence, there may be some part of that contract that would state that the City of Soldatna would have to participate in that as well. That's something that we would have to look at and determine prior to coming back to the council for a recommendation. So, you'll, you'll see that when we come back to council. At this point, as far as how grants would be pursued and whether Soldatna would have a, a piece of that, I can't tell you for certain if that's how the final recommendation would look.
Thank you, and one follow-up question.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Winger.
You said it would be shared based on population. Does that take into account their influx with tourism? They have a higher traffic volume through their area in the summer, so would they be responsible for that uptick in calls during that time and not just based off of the winter population?
Mr. Ostrander?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, Councilmember Winger. That may be something that we want to consider when we, when we talk to them about how this contract worked. Maybe there is an adjustment during the summer months. And again, we've, we've only had very preliminary discussions. These are things that we'd have to determine as we, as we work with them. The, the one thing that I think in those preliminary discussions that we agreed on, though, is, is using call volumes as something that's very difficult to do, and you see a lot of agreements that, that attempt to use call volumes to base their contracts on, and the difficulty there is the different organizations, their call volumes are very difficult to compare because they handle things differently. So, you may have a, a quite small police department that has a call volume that is equivalent or greater than a much larger department simply because of their, the way that they operate. So, we do agree the population is, is the correct route to go, but, you know, your point about the influx during this, during the summer, that may be something that we want to consider as, as we look into this further.
Thank you. I would like to see that to be a consideration in these discussions. I do have concerns on taking over more services from the City of Soldatna in partnership. As stated, we're doing animal control and then dispatch. Next, it'll be water and sewer. I, I just feel like there's got to be a line on partnerships being. If this is saving them money, there definitely should be an equal share in the upkeep in training and hiring.
Thank you, Councilmember Winger. I, since we're giving, getting an overview, Mr. Ostrander, there was, there was some efforts, I think, from the governor's office or within the state government to relocate or consolidate 911 services, and basically utilize those and re, I think, centralize them out of Palmer. And I guess what I'm wondering if this, I know they currently handle the, the Soldatna Police Department dispatch services, so is, is this a result of that, or is this something that they, they want to export it to as a money-saving effort? Or, or just kind of curious as how that would work if, if the 911 center, I know our, our local legislative delegation have fought that, you know, relocation of 911, and if this, you know, is going to, you know, diminish their efforts at some level?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So, the City of Soldatna approached us because the borough is, is reworking their contracts that they have with the different agencies that operate through their dispatch center. So, they dispatch for the City of Soldatna, they dispatch for the troopers, and they dispatch for all the emergency service areas in the borough. So, they've been reworking their, their contract, and the City of Soldatna is due to pay significantly more for dispatch services than they have in the past. That's what initiated this request from Soldatna to, to look at it. You know, I, I would say that, that some of the things that, that you would see with this is, we would have to increase the number of employees at the dispatch center, because right now, our dispatch center does not have two dispatchers on 24 hours a day, seven days a week. If we brought Soldatna on, we would have to bring on several new dispatchers that would provide that 24/7 coverage, which would, in fact, be a benefit to the residents of the city. You know, and i- if we look at this, and in the end, administration determines that it's not in the best interest of the City of Kenai, we certainly would not recommend that council consider it. So, the only way we'd bring it back is if it, if it does, that it is in the best interest of the City of Kenai. It may benefit Soldatna as well, that would be great, but if it's not in our best interests, we're not going to recommend approval. The one thing that I would say that is interesting about the dispatch services that we have right now is if you place a 911 call in the City of Kenai on your cell phone, it goes to Soldatna. All cellular phone calls that are 911 go to Soldatna currently. Soldatna picks up the call, determines that it's in the City of Kenai, and then it's, then it is transferred to our dispatch center. If it's a landline within the City of Kenai, it goes directly to our dispatch center. There is technology that exists today that allows it to go directly to our dispatch center on cell phone calls. We have to, we have to become the PSAP for those cell phone calls, but that is also something that I'm very interested in pursuing regardless if we bring Soldatna on or not, because currently, our residents are experiencing a 15-second to 30-second delay on all their 911 calls because they're all routed through Soldatna. So, regardless, again, if we go to Soldatna or not, that's something that I'd like to pursue to see if we can get that relay, all those calls going to Soldatna, if we can get that, that middleman cut out, so.
Yeah, and I guess that was just my reason, was, was one of what spawned the purpose of them approaching us. I kind of figured that might be one of the, one of the issues for them, and as far as, you know, animal control, I understand, you know, from what I understand, that seems to be working out well as if we're going to, you know, hold that up as a, as an example of, you know, how the, how these types of things can work. Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes, I, I will be supporting this, and, and from what City Manager Ostrander has alluded to so far, I think there'll be efficiencies and, and, and a cohesive service for the, for the two municipalities, and, and I encourage you to investigate this further. Thank you.
And Councilmember Nextet?
Yeah, I, I look forward to the administration ringing this back to us so we have a little more information, and, but I, I thought I'd, I'd ask to see, since, since our police chief, Ross is, Ross is here, if he had anything that he might want to add to the discussion, since you're responsible, I believe, for dispatch, and you probably know more about it than anybody else in the room, if there was anything additionally you might want to add.
Chief Ross?
Thank you, Councilor Nextet, through the mayor. I think the city manager spoke, spoke to it well. I think we have some challenges to look at as far as technology and staffing, and some benefits to look at, and, and I think we'll be able to do that hopefully in short order and come back with a recommendation. I don't, you know, I think that he, he brought up the main staffing thing is to make sure, I don't think we could bring on another agency without making sure we had two people on all the time, sort of loo- see what that looks like, and then there's, there's a few technology pieces. They, they, all of the City of Kenai calls are, get transferred over here because we have police and fire. Well, City of Soldatna doesn't have its own fire, so calls would have to be determined over there if they're police or fire before they were transferred. So, there are a few challenges, there are some technology challenges, they use a different records management system, so I think it's just going to take a little due diligence as the city manager mentioned to see, see if we can figure that out.
Any further discussion?
Request unanimous consent.
Thank you. Unanimous consent was requested, is there an objection? Seeing or hearing none, the council approves potential own, partnership with the City of Soldatna to provide 911 dispatch services. That brings us to commission committee reports, council on aging.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council on Aging met on August the 12th at 4:30 over at the Kenai Senior Center, and the new business topic was changing the time of their meeting. With the members that represent the council on aging, they were wanting to move the time from 4:30 to 3:00 p.m. because of the darkness and road conditions, and so that will be coming before the council because the council has to approve that. Also, there were some grants that were received for Meals on Wheels, and there will be a, a part-time driver and, that will be added to the meal delivery opportunity, and they're waiting for the background check. And also, they'll be recruiting for a part-time driver as well. Another thing is that they will, they have started the groundwork for the greenhouse, which is going to be located on the far end past the kitchen there, and they're going to be doing some, all, their own vegetable growing opportunities and having fresh vegetables for the senior meals, and that was in, in honor of the loss of Mr. Os-
Osborne?
Osborne, yes. And so, that, and they've already got the kit, and that will be assembled, and so that will be a new addition to that facility over there. Also, today at 2:00, they were going to be filling 20, no, 200 emergency kits that was established for, from the grants from COVID, and those will be handed out to different individuals in our community, senior individuals of our community. And that ends my report. Thank you so very much. I, I believe our next time that we're going to meet will be over in September on the 9th. Thank you.
Thank you. Airport Commission?
Thank you, Mayor. No report, next airport commission is September 9th.
Thank you. Harbor Commission?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Harbor Commission is having a special meeting Monday, August 23rd at 6:00 p.m. for a discussion and recommendation on the Kenai waterfront revitalization feasibility study, which we will be taking up at our, our first meeting in September at Ordinance.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Commission?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. There, we did not meet this month. I was present for the garden tour that was done with beautification, but I will make sure, or let Victoria talk about that. And our next Parks and Rec meeting is Thursday, the 2nd.
Thank you. Planning and Zoning Commission?
Oh, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Planning and zoning met August 11th here in the chambers. We had consideration of a plat. It was a preliminary subdivision plat of town site of Kenai, Kenai C courthouse replat submitted by Edge Survey and Design on behalf of the Kenai, Kenai C Indian Tribe. And that was passed unanimously. We had an action, an approval item regarding the development incentives for reserved lands on the city of Kenai between city of Kenai and shilling rentals. And that also was passed. The next meeting is August 25th. Thank you.
Thank you. Beautification Committee?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. As Councilmember Winger stated, we had our garden tour last Tuesday evening. We went through the Lee Hansen Memorial Park, the Eric Hansen Park, and then around the administration buildings and public safety and the library. One thing that was discussed was if in the future we could possibly come up with some more places for the memorial plaques. I had a request from a citizen that they would like to have one and asked if there would be any possibly made available in the future. And one of the things that we came up with is there's some nice landscape rocks that don't have anything on them that possibly could be another place that we could put memorial plaques. We also got to visit over at the chamber and the doctor's cabin and came up with some ideas for flowers and plants there. And our next meeting is September 14.
Thank you. Under many grants, Attorney Committee, there is no, there is no report. Under report of the mayor, on August 6th, we had our, our ribbon cutting ceremony over at the Kenai Airport Terminal. And I saw a lot of, there's quite a few member, council members there and other dignitaries. It was, turned out to be a wonderful day. The weather cooperated perfectly and, and we had a, our local dignitaries there. And it was very well, you know, very well done. I want to thank Erica Rensfield for all the work that she did to put in there with the, you know, the, the ability for folks to go in and check out the, the facility and then have their refreshments afterwards. And so I thought that was very well done. And then this morning I did attend a breakfast roundtable with Alaska Oil and Gas over at the Challenger Center. And like a good, good discussion. They were having their board member, or board meeting down here. So they had breakfast just prior, just to, you know, have some local folks go there and roundtable with them. Very interesting conversation. I, I was planning on attending the, I think it was the Alaska Air, Airport Advisory Commission, I think is that who had met Tuesday night at the social over at the, over at the terminal. And unfortunately I had a, I had a personal issue that came up that I couldn't attend. So, but just wanted to, at some point, like to connect with those folks, particularly the FAA folks that have been so, you know, helpful in getting us the things that we need for our airfield and our terminal and keeping our airport going. And obviously our, you know, equipment for snow removal, which we had approved this evening for, you know, $800,000. So certainly those things are, are important to us. And it would, it was just kind of a bummer that I wasn't able to attend that, just at least to meet with the FAA folks. So, and then finally, I just wanted to just remind everybody of the same message I had last week with COVID numbers rising, just remember to practice good hygiene. Wash your hands, clean your surfaces and, and see if we can tamp down the current spike we're, we're experiencing. And with that, I'll go to administration reports. City Manager, Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So on the 11th of August, Scott Kurt and I met with three folks from the leadership team of the Corps of Engineers to tour the bluff property in person. Actually was honored to tour Brigadier General Kirk Gibbs, who is the commanding general of the Pacific Ocean Division based in Hawaii, along with Colonel Damon De La Rosa, who is the commander of the Alaska District, and Randy Baucher, who's a deputy of the Alaska, Alaska District. We showed them three areas on the bluff. They're next to the senior center. Also, the area next to the church where the walkway and our, actually one of our water mains is almost over the bluff. And then we also went down further towards, towards No Name Creek and showed them that. So they got a really good visual of it. It's pretty compelling when you get an up close and personal look at it compared to just looking at pictures. You know, they reiterated consistently during that whole tour that they hear consistently from our congressional delegation, delegation that this project is a priority. It's a priority of the Corps. And they still seem to be very confident that funding is going to be forthcoming. So it was a great visit and I really appreciated, particularly the, the Brigadier General coming down and touring with us. Also, on the 13th, I met with Ray Samansky and Ronnie McNutt of AIX. They're the, the folks that operate the, the gas pad over there adjacent to the city shop. They usually stop by once a year and give me an update on what's going on. Production is still really strong in, in, at that pad. They, they would love to expand. They'd love to go beyond that. They don't have any ability at this point because of lack of leases, but they're certainly interested in doing more business here if, if that becomes available. Also, on August 11th, we received the first half of our American Rescue Plan Act funding. So $942,274 was received by the city. It's going to come in two chunks. We're not certain on the timing in the second, but likely sometime next year we'll receive the, the second portion of that. Today, I actually went to the Alaska Oil and Gas breakfast with Mayor Gabriel. And that's always really an interesting and informative breakfast. And today was no different. I also did go to the Aviation Advisory Board, which is the, the mixer that, that we had at, at Upper Deck last night. I went to the, the mixer for a bit, but I also went to their board meeting today. You know, the, the director of the Alaska FAA, Kristi Warden, is there. The commissioner of DOT, John McKinnon, was there. And I used it as an opportunity to talk about, one, that a lot of folks don't understand is that the Alaska Regional Fire Training Facility is owned by the city of Kenai. It's not a Beacon facility, so I made sure to clarify that for all those folks. And I also use it as an opportunity to plug the use of that facility for all DOT employees. Currently, about 95% of DOT employees that work in the rural areas of the state train at that facility. But the DOT employees or the state employees that work at Anchorage Municipality or Anchorage Municipal Airport do not train there. They've trained at Jay Bear. And there are several others that, that really should be training at that facility. It was built to be a regional fire training facility, not just for the state of Alaska, but for the whole Northwest. And we need to really start pushing it towards that. So it was good because this advisory board is separate from the DOT. I mean, they are advisory group made up of all sorts of interested users of the aviation industry. So seemed like it was a message well received and, and hopefully we can move towards that. Also, today at 4 o'clock, I met with the Salam Matoff Board. They were having their quarterly board meeting. And I had met with Chris Monford, their, their executive director, about our waterfront revitalization feasibility report and the possibility that Salam Matoff may eventually be interested in some sort of partnership there. They do a lot of work and a lot of it is out of the state. I know they're very interested in, in doing some projects in, in state. And so I met with the board today. I talked about what the feasibility report would do if, if the, if the money is, is approved and appropriated. Talked about some of the vision that the, the public had shared at the work session. I gave them the packet that council had at the last work session. And then beyond that, I talked about the different economic incentives that council has been so supportive of that we're also pursuing as administration. And finally, I talked to them about the fact that there are other potential partnerships with the city that could be really advantageous to both Salam Matoff and to the city. So I think that there's, there's a lot of opportunities there. And, and we'll continue to try to work on, on that relationship and hopefully it, it can grow. Quick update on COVID. Cases are much higher in our area. We have no employees right now in COVID protocol. Then that's a real positive. On the bluff project, one small update, obviously HDR is continuing to work on the design, but we did close on a large parcel. You know, we've been acquiring land there so that we can have all the land available. We acquired a very large parcel, about 800 lineal feet of the bluff. It leaves three parcels for acquisition. Two that I'm actively pursuing after the owners multiple times have told our, our planning folks that they're not interested in selling. So I've taken those over and I'm going to actively pursue acquiring those myself. And the third one, I think because of the continuing erosion of the bluff, we're actually not going to need to acquire that property. So that's, that's positive. The last thing I had actually, I wanted Terry to provide, we do have updated sales tax information for the second quarter of this calendar year. And I'd like him to share that information with council.
Mr. Yvank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I wait up all night, you know, in February. And I do this again, you know, this time of year. I'll do this again in November and start the cycle all over. But I think in years, or for the last two years at least, I've used words like I'm amazed and I'm surprised. But I think now I'm just going to switch my verbiage and I'm just, I'm just flat impressed with, with our local economy and what's going on in Kenai. So this is comparing year over year. So 2021 numbers versus 2020 numbers. For the first quarter of 2021, we were up 6.9% over the prior year. That was already out. But for the second quarter, we were up 8.94%, which compared to other areas of the borough is, is, we're actually the lowest increase year over year. But I think that's because in 2020, we were the only jurisdiction that didn't have a decrease in sales, significant decrease in sales as a result of COVID. So our growth is, but when I go back and I compare these numbers to pre-COVID, so I'm going to compare 2021 second quarter sales to 2019 second quarter sales. The city of Kenai's taxable sales have grown by 16.19% over that two-year period of time. So some pretty impressive growth. Just a, a little bit of sidebar, a little bit more information. When I drill down into some of the data, I, I wanted to look and see what was going on with some of the industries that were hardest hit by COVID, like the tourism-related industries, restaurants and bars, hotels, B's and Bs, things like that. And I'm happy to say that they, according to these numbers, they've all recovered and surpassed pre-COVID numbers. So when I look at guiding water, this is one classification, 2021 sales compared to June of 2019, so pre-COVID, guiding on waters up almost 300%. Hotel motel, B&Bs are up 5% over that period of time. So we've not only recovered, but we've surpassed those pre-COVID numbers. Our restaurants and bars are up almost 16, a little over 16%. And strongest area of our economy obviously is our retail. And our retail is, our retail trade is up almost 19% over that period of time. So it's just, like I said, I'm, I'm changing my verbiage. I'm no longer amazed. I'm no longer surprised. I'm just flat impressed with what's going on economically here in town. So I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you. I guess I'll lead off of this. Is there any, could you put your thumb on what's driving that, Mr. Yvank?
Uh, well, I, I will say a couple of things that I did look at. We do see a substantial increase in taxable sales when you see increases in high-volume taxable industries. So my, my best example of that right now is I think fuel prices are up, I don't know, a buck a gallon in, in, you know, a relatively short period of time. You know, that, that's a high volume of taxable transactions. So that's driving a little bit of this for sure. But other than that, no, I, I really can't give you an explanation. I think, you know, there's just a lot of good activity going on in town.
It's great to hear. Does council, do you have any, Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I was just wondering about online sales tax collection. Were you able to break that out at all or what's happening with that?
Mr. Yvank?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Malloy. These numbers are only what's collected on our brick and mortar stores. I have not looked at the online stuff, to be honest with you. So
Thank you.
This, yeah.
Any other comments from council? Thanks for that, Terry. Appreciate it. Any questions of Mr. Ostrander? Councilmember Glenn Denny?
Just one, one observation, and maybe it should come under comments, but I got a, a couple of calls from hockey moms just thanking the city for their effort last year of opening up the hockey rink. And they look forward to having that association again. And, and just compliments and kudos to, to the, to the city for, for allowing that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions for the city manager? Seeing none, we'll turn to the city attorney, Mr. Bloom.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, members of council. I don't have any comments at this time. I, I will work with Terry at the next meeting. We can give you an update on the online sales tax. I can tell you that they are continuing to grow. I think, Terry, we're doing about statewide now over a million dollars a month. And our share is continuing to grow.
Any questions of the city attorney? Seeing none, we'll turn to the city clerk with I'm sure an election update, our election season update.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. The candidate filing period closed on Monday at 5:00 PM. And we have five candidates this year. Victoria Askin, Alex Delfett, Deborah Sonart, James Basden, and Jim Duffield are all going to be on the ballot for two council seats.
Thank you. Any questions of the city clerk? Councilmember next, then.
Probably a little bit early, but AML, it looks like they're planning on meeting in person. Last I saw on their website, have you got any updates on that?
My understanding, they're still planning on it in person. They just finished a week or two ago, their in-person summer conference in Fairbanks.
Any other questions of the city clerk? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to additional public comment. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to address council at this time on any item?
If you're on Zoom, you can unmute yourself.
Let's see, is that, Mr. Basen has his hand up?
Yeah.
Mr. Basen, you have the floor.
Can you hear me? Mr. Basen, you have the floor. Can you hear me, Mayor? Hello, can you hear me?
Hang on just a second. We're having problems with our, our-
No, nothing.
Mr. Basen, can you hear us?
Basen, can you hear us? Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's a little bit muffled. We're trying to work on-
That's a little bit muffled. We're trying to work on-
Tuning up ours.
I hope it's not on my side.
Okay, let's try that.
Better or worse? Better or worse?
A little bit better.
No, still nothing? A little bit better. Mayor, is that better? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I don't know. For some reason, we're getting a feedback here. For some reason, we're getting a feedback here.
Yeah, I don't know. For some reason, we're getting a feedback here.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead and go, Mr. Basen. You're muted, Mr. Basen. Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to address the council this time? Oh, is he back on?
Yeah, you're, go ahead.
Okay. Anybody else from the general public that'd like to address the council this time? Seeing none, we'll move to council comments. Let's start online. Councilmember Winger.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I would like to extend congratulations and a thank you to the five candidates who put their name in to run for the two seats in October, and I wish them great luck in their campaign efforts. I'd also would like to welcome all the kids back to school and remind people to be cautious in school zones and around the bus stops. I would hope to see that we have a student body representative this year. I, I, as well as many constituents that reached out, am disappointed that there will be no Industry Appreciation Day, and I look forward to helping or supporting the efforts and making sure an Industry Appreciation Day happens next year. I'd also like with the unification with the borough on the Spruce Bark Beetle issue to remind people to firewise their property as we head into the fall months, and to remove any dead or leaning trees before winter, because we get some real massive windstorms. So just get your property firewise for moving into those fall/winter months. And then I would just like to acknowledge all of our staff and our departments that are doing an amazing job serving our community. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Askin.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I want to thank Jamie and Scott for working with me on, and Councilmember Winger so we could Zoom in tonight. Unfortunately, I'm one of the statistics now. I got to tour the Art Guild with Mary and Nelson after our last meeting, and I'm really impressed with all of the improvements that have happened in that building, and, and we've unearthed the, the jail and the measurement stuff on the wall. That was pretty cool, and that they're saving that. I don't have anything else at, at this time. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I want to thank City Manager Paul Ostrander for recognizing my, my, my time in life. I think I picked the wrong time to be 79 in my, in my age selection, but, but I do notice that he put a D-Fib machine on the wall for me, and, and, and I, I don't even buy green bananas, so thank you, thank you for trying to get me through this term anyway. And that's all I have to say. Maybe, maybe more next, next time, but we had a good meeting tonight and, and thank everybody for their attention.
Thank you. Councilmember Petty?
Yes, I, I had the opportunity to go to the ribbon cutting ceremony out at the airport, and that was a, a very wonderful celebration to honor the completion of all of that planning and hard work, and thank everyone that was involved in, in making that happen, and also saying thank you to the FAA for the resources that allowed that to happen. I'm thankful to hear about the progress and that the, the individuals, the generals that visited our Bluff erosion to recognize the severity and urgency of that project and look forward to seeing that come to fruition. Also, I look forward to further insight and progress on our waterfront opportunities moving forward, and look forward to the transportation line and hope that the, our friends, the Kenai's, can get that put together with that grant to help our community members. So that ends my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, really, really good news tonight from the City Manager Report, especially the Bluff Erosion Project, like, like my colleague, Councilmember Petty. I appreciate very much that the top-level Pacific people for the Corps of Engineers came and visited personally and thanked the administration for making that happen. And also, what a sales tax report. I mean, that's just, it's, it's pretty incredible, and I, I think, you know, the administration and council have done a good work in, in, in creating a, an environment that supports business in, in the City of Kenai, and, and, and that's a really good thing, as well as, as, you know, the quality of life that we have for, for our people here. Also, like my colleague, Councilmember Winger, I want to congratulate the candidates who are going to be on the ballot for the October 5th election. Victoria Askin, Alex Dowfett, James Basden, Deborah Sonart, and Jim Duffield, thank you for putting your hat in the ring to, and, 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 you know, have a, have a great election cycle. Also, looking forward to working with the council in our work session at 4:00 PM September 1 before our, our council meeting on the election code, and, and looking forward to your questions and working on that, and, and coming up with a, you know, a, a good improvement on our election code. Thank you.
Councilmember next then.
Thank you. I too attended the airport terminal ribbon cutting, and it was well-attended, and the way I look at it, the, the building itself was like a typical Alaska home. It'd been added on to multiple times, and it looked like it, and it probably felt like it, too. The money that we put into that with help from the federal government upgraded everything inside the walls, the mechanical, electrical, all of that, the outside. I consider it a brand-new building now, so we're starting from, with a new building, in my opinion. So anyway, with, with that, too, and I, I look forward to some additional work that I expect to happen, maybe not this fall, but landscaping. I think there's some grass there, trees and all of that. There'll be a flag going up as well, you know, as these treatments are, are added. The, the building will look more finished rather than just a kind of a government building sitting there. So then last night, I also attended the aviation social. There were three, no, there was two airport commissioners there as well, and those that were in attendance, there were, there were several from the State Aviation Advisory Board established with the, with the governor through the governor, and John McKinnon, the DOT Commissioner, and other people with the state of Alaska that are involved with aviation, aviation side of, of the state of Alaska were there. And so, yes, it was a, it was a social, and then we went downstairs to that new meeting room, the first time I've gotten to, to actually go in there. And one of the individuals and with DOT is, I'm not sure what his title is, but he was brilliant, and, and he talked about drones. The state of Alaska, it has drones and through the University of Alaska, and these are fixed-wing drones, and also, you know, the regular helicopter like you might see, and they are proving and expanding on those, being able to map at airports and whatnot. And one of the things that is unique to Kenai is we're one of the airports on the coast that has been selected by DOT for, for these drones. They're starting out in Fairbanks. They have fixed-wing ones that are actually, right now, they're taxiing around anonymously, or, you know, by themselves, and they'll be taking off and landing and all of that, but that will be coming here as well as some of the other coastal. And the reason they're, they're picking places like Kenai and some of the other coasts along, along the Alaskas, that it won't happen necessarily right over the airport. It'll start here, but it'll be out over the water. So if something goes wrong, it happens out there. So, so we'll probably be seeing some activity eventually here. The City Manager kind of whispered to me after my, my report that the airport commission is having a second, a meeting this month that I was unaware of on the 26th, and they'll be going over the, the waterfront project, and I presume that you'll be kind of officiating that or somebody under you. So I'll look forward to that. And just one last thing is with the Bluff Erosion Project and the waterfront, I want to offer any services the CAP might be able to provide as far as if you need some photos that are updated, whatever, we have high-resolution cameras, no cost to the city. We're out doing proficiency flying anyway, and we can certainly take photos of any of those areas, you know, at or above 500 feet. So that's, that is available to the city upon request.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. So we're now, councilor now on item L, executive session. Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I've moved to convene the City Council of the City of Kenai into executive session to review and discuss the terms of employment agreement for the city clerk, which pursuant to AS 4462310C2, may be a subject that tends to prejudice the reputation and character of the city clerk, and request the attendance of the city clerk and city attorney as may be necessary.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, clerk please hold roll.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Motion passes.